At this time, I call a 10 September meeting of the Crew Town Council to order. Please bear with me as we have a prayer of remembrance on the 17th anniversary of the tragic events of 9/11. Keep by your heads. Father in heaven, we take this time on the anniversary of the tragic attacks on our nation on September 11, 2001, to remember those men and women who have served in defense of our citizens at home and abroad. We remember and give thanks to the countless local men and women who have donned the uniform of our nation to take the fight to the enemies of our republic. We remember the families of our fallen who have faced with a lifetime of sadness following the loss of their loved ones. And we remember our local fallen who sacrificed their lives while in the service of our republic and in defense of their homes and families. Ethan Plute, Peggy Hurt, a Department of Defense civilian who was killed when terrorists crashed one of four planes of the Pentagon on September 11, 2001. With Ludenberg roots, she lived in Crewe for a period of time. We remember Army Staff Sergeant Jason Arnett of Amelia County. Jason's Gold Star mother, Michelle Mickey Arnett Bryant is now a resident of Burkeville. Jason was a member of Company C, 14th Infantry Regiment, 10th Mountain Division. He was mortally wounded in action by an improvised explosive device in Baghdad on April 1st, 2007. He is now buried in Arlington Cemetery. We remember Marine Corporal Jonathan Tyler Yale, killed in Iraq, grew up in Burkeville and Mahara. In 2008, while standing on guard duty in Ramadi, Iraq, he and Corporal Jonathan Harder faced down a suicide truck bomber, killing the terrorist and stopping a truck full of explosives. The truck exploded, killing both Yale and his colleague. And we remember Coast Guard Lieutenant Adam Bryant, the son of Nina Bryant of Crewe. On October 29th, 2009, Adam, age 28, and the crew of an HC-130 aircraft were conducting a search and rescue mission near San Clemente Island in California when it collided with a Marine Corps helicopter. Their sacrifices are a reminder that freedom is not free. Amen. Just join me in the praise. Much ladies and gentlemen, to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just as long. We now have delegations from the public. Okay. No delegations from the public. We had a, we had tentatively a representative on workforce investment services from the district in which Crewe is in, and she cannot make it this month, but she said she should be able to make it next month depending on what date we choose. And we'll talk about that date later. We now go to the consent calendar. Matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be approved by one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar to request of a member of council and may be voted on separately. You have before you the minutes of the town council meeting held on 13 August 2018, minutes of the public hearing held on 13 August 2018, the bill sheet, and then you have the additions from just two minutes ago. Do we have a motion?
Motion, your president.
All right. We have a motion in a second to approve any discussion. No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, my lights on. Motion carries. Go to the town manager's report.
Most of, most of you know, many of our street signs in town are missing or in pretty bad shape and need to be, need to be replaced. I've started researching, trying to find, what I'm trying to shoot for is some, some that are pretty much like what we have, the ones that we can salvage and make and refresh and buy new ones that'll match the old ones if that doesn't work. Then we may just, we may just, may ask the council to go in and see if we can get them all replaced. You know, we passed an audit that we require numbers on houses. It kind of stands to reason that we ought to have street signs up so we can find the streets as well. So I should have some more options and prices in the future. We still haven't heard anything from Department of Aviation on our request of assistance on the runway repair. You may recall back in July, they said they wouldn't have any funding until after the 1st of July. We submitted our project requests prior to that and they said after July 1st, we'd hear back from them. I have not heard from them. Sent a couple of emails and still no response. There's some issues with the runway and I don't, I don't hear anything from people that know what they're looking at, but if we don't do something, we have a hard way to lose the runway. So I think it's important. And Bill Wilkson is helping us a lot with that situation too. He's got a lot of contacts over there with the poles. Last month, I mentioned, it's kind of a whirlwind meeting, so I don't know if anybody heard me. So I'm gonna say again, I'm very concerned about expansion going on at VCBR. I've got a few more solid numbers. We heard a range, I'm hearing from one particular person with VCBR that it's 278 new beds, but I'm hearing from another pretty reliable source that they're building for 500. So I've sent an email to the lady that's the engineer in charge of the meet-up, trying to stir up some activity. I talked to Steve Bowden. I've talked to several of the council members about this. Right now, we're running on average 20 to 20 more hours a day at our water plant. Just because of the demand that we have now. Common sense would tell you, if they add 500 beds, that's gonna put their inmate number pretty close to what the prison is. How and how to compare the two as far as how they'll use it, but there are formulas for per person, per day, 200 gallons a minute per day. So if you do the math, I'm very concerned that we will not be able to keep up. We can run 24/7, still not be able to keep up. And that creates a big problem. Somebody should have been talking about this way back when, when they first started talking about this expansion, but they didn't. And as y'all can see, it's going up, so it's gonna happen. I emailed Tessie to maybe start the process of looking into what, what we're required to do legally. I recall a contract, but cannot find it states that we can tell them, and I'm saying we're gonna do that at this point, that 90 days comes to mind and we can inform them that we're not gonna be able to provide them what we want. We have to give them 90-day notice. I really do think it's that serious and it's something that we need to do. Although I don't want the town to have to spend any money on this because I don't feel like it's our fault. I do feel like it may be prudent on our part to contact our consultants to at least do some preliminary work on the numbers, to find out if our concerns are real. Number one, there's several things that need to be looked at. Should we stop providing them water? What kind of effect does that gonna have on our budget? We get a whole lot of money from them and money's not the problem here. It's the production. And then there's the other side of it, supply. As y'all know, we talk about that a lot. So I'm very concerned about it and I think it's gonna be a problem.
Maybe I don't know nothing about it, but if we can't, if we can't supply them with water for these new, this new facility that they're building, then we just can't do it. That's their problem. Right? Or are we, do we have to provide them water?
That's where the legal part comes in. I'm not sure. You know, we're dealing with the state and if something were to happen. And keep in mind too, now Pimo is possible, it's not a problem.
Yeah.
They've never been a problem. We can provide the water for them and you've got patience there. I don't mean to separate the two types of funding out here, but there is a difference. The biggest problem we have is the prison. Prison is the major user. And they're using, they're using as much in a month as the town uses in three months. So just about, when you, when you break that down into cost and hours and how long we're operating, and again, I'm no expert at this, I'm just thinking, if we took them out of the picture, and I don't want to see anybody lose a job either, but we could cut two people and cut down to one shift a day on a plant. So you've got to, you've got to look at what we're saving by not operating. Because as y'all know, we calculated a lot of this loan that we took out for the sewer as being funded by the water. So you gotta keep all that in mind too. And that's where I feel like we might need consultants to come in, look at the numbers and break them down. We were talking to the mayor today, trying to figure out what, what does it cost us to produce a gallon of water? There are formulas to do that and you can, you can do it. $2 or something a gallon comes to mind, but that was years ago. So I don't know.
We need to do a cost benefit analysis, number one, to see how much it actually costs us to produce a gallon of water. We may not be charging them for water, believe me about that. That's the first thing. Second thing is that there was a proposal of a possible water authority if we can't provide it. Now, Crewe doesn't need a water authority, but if they, the state wishes to do that, they could very well fund a line to Sandy River and work with Prince Edward Boats that have that reservoir of water available to them if they wanted to go down that route. And that would, that would be on them and we wouldn't, you know, we would lose that customer, but at the same time, it would alleviate the demand on our ability to produce water and actually give us more water for industrial prospects and want to fill up.
Do you wanna get rid of them?
No.
I mean, I, that's not asked very delicately, I'm just...
No.
Well, it sounds to me, what am I missing here? If, if they're gonna increase all those beds which would demand more water, don't you get, doesn't that increase your profit from, or can you not provide the water?
That's, that's the problem. We can't provide the water.
We may not have enough.
We're gonna cap out something. We're almost at the cap out point now.
You can't operate 24/7. You know, we can't put out for whatever it is, 385 gallons a minute. And when they're using more than we're putting out, then we can't keep up. And then of course, supply comes in.
We gotta have supply for your, your fire protection and then the regular folks that live here.
I had a store saying they were talking about 500 beds. This has been some time ago.
Well, the word that I got it was 500 beds coming in.
No, that's, that's what it is. And you could, all right, let's just say we all sat down at the table and they said, all right, what do we need to do to help you? You know, how are we gonna do this? And you're thinking, well, we need more supply, we need more, a bigger plant so we can operate and produce more water. That, that's, that's enough in itself, but if you start doing that, then you, it snowballs. Because now you got a problem with, you can start with the main line that comes from Bydaway. That's over 100 years old. And if you add, let's say you go from 350 to 450 gallons a minute, you're gonna increase pressure on that line, you gotta place a line too. One thing leads to another. And so there's no simple solution.
It would be better for the taxpayer not to have to incur that cost for that, for the state now.
And also, as we sit here, common sense would say, if there's a problem and we have a water shortage and we have to ration water, we've got to take care of the citizens in town of Crewe first. That's where the legal thing comes in. Because I don't know, I don't wanna be the phone call from the Attorney General office of the state saying, you can't do that. You know, you've got to...
It's not a good hope.
Well, we did.
They trucked water in.
We did.
They trucked water in.
It seems like somebody'd be smart enough to know you can't just build a facility without realizing you're gonna need to get water from somewhere.
What the mayor said, in my mind, don't, don't wanna lose them, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, I'm not saying...
We don't wanna lose them. But if we can't do it...
Then we can't do it.
Then they gotta find another way. And the only other way right now to me is to go to the farm in Sandy River.
Well, what, if they have to find another way, that's not our concern anymore, right?
I hope not.
So let me just throw a few things out there. I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I believe a contingency plan for VCBR is to drill wells.
Go ahead, I'll finish. I'll follow you up on this.
Whether to help take some of the pressure off of us or to solve their water, or get their water entirely from that. I had reached out to an individual, he actually reached out to me, and I think that's how some of this conversation got started, about doing a water study. There's been some reorganization at the agency and he's retiring at the end of October, so I've gotta reach out to another person, but I'll get you that information as well and I'll CC you on the, on the email.
This should really...
Right.
Talk about, I mean, they've been planning this, I'm sure, for a year or better. And they mentioned to me in an email, community meetings, nothing is mentioned about meetings. Well, I didn't even know they had community meetings. If I did know that, we would've been invited and we would've been in there and had this discussion with them.
I was community meetings, I'm worried about...
Yeah, I mean, you know.
But don't advertise law clerk, you don't know. They advertise with me.
All I, all a point I really wanna get across to everybody is that I do think it's a serious matter. You know, I don't think it's gonna be something as to, oh, we were wrong and, because I know what we're doing now, 20 to 22 hours a day and not for a few more hours left. And you can't do so much, so...
My question is, the grades five through 12 at the high school, at the, at the school complex, the crew is supplying all of their water still. And I remember back not too long ago, that they requested, the crew requested that Blackstone contribute running that line to the high school, to the, to the, to the, where it connects just beyond the high school, and they wanted to charge crew for running the pipes there.
There was some discussion about that as an option. That was dealing with the water party also. Well, that, that, that's another problem, in my opinion. I mean, I don't know the gallons right offhand, maybe Tiffany does. They water the football field down there and they use one heck of a lot of water. And they do it every other day.
Water on that football field?
Water on the football, water on the football field. Throwing it on the ground now.
In the rain.
They dug wells there at one point and tried that, but I don't think it worked out and Pimo did too. I was told about the wells as well. What they're, what they're saying is, if their plants already use the, use the water for non-potable use. Well, stop and think about that. Unless you've got some kind of elaborate system that separates everything, say they use it non-potable for commodities, you can do it. But you've gotta have your system set up where it separates all of the water, 'cause they got a laboratory sitting right here and a toilet right here. So this has gotta be potable and that's not a problem. I don't think it's realistic to assume that, yes, they can use it for some things, but what would they really be using it for?
Well, Burkeville uses wells, but they have to treat them. They just have to get a little treatment.
All I'm saying is that it's gonna be a problem and, and I don't want it to jump up in bias and we're sitting there one day and we, we work it 24/7 and we can't keep up and we got, we lose fire protection in town, we have, we have major problems.
Well, here what I'm gonna recommend, first of all, we need to do a cost analysis on, on how much does it actually cost us to produce a gallon of water? Are we charging enough for that? Number one. Number two, I want you to reach out to Steve, I guess, and see who's in charge over there and who we have to set up a meeting with to discuss this. And Bill's got that inside contact, I guess, if we can bring all the heads together. And we need to sit down and have a meeting and say, what is your plan? I mean, because they have to have a plan. We need to tell them flat out that we may not be able to provide all our water needs and if we can't, what is your plan? Because they're the ones responsible ultimately for that facility.
And they just think the biggest water user. What, what would you lose if you lost them financially?
A lot. Again, I'm sure we'd probably lose, but if you take them out of the picture and you think about...
There's other savings.
There are other things that you're not gonna have to do anymore, chemicals.
But that would, remember that, that would offset a little on.
It would bring your cost down. Considerably, not to mention, it may, may solve any supply problem that we have.
One of, one of the biggest costs that we have with producing the water are the chemicals that we use. You know, you've heard people talk about Crewe water in the past, it's because they weren't using enough chemicals or the right chemicals. But that has been fixed and...
Which is another option, but I'm not...
That's Crewe water right there.
I'm not doing it as long as I'm sitting here. We can give up quality. We can change the way we treat it and give up some of the quality and save some money on that.
No.
She can tell everyone, we do not wanna go down that road.
If, if we're gonna do an internal water study on that, what it costs us to, per gallon or whatnot, then I'm sure it wouldn't be that difficult in the same study to figure this is how much we can produce.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, I mean, I, I feel like that would be, again, I don't know as much about it as y'all do, but I feel like we give the state that number, look, this is all we can do. Anything beyond that is a big problem.
We gotta have that number. We gotta have that number, because when we sit down at the table with them, they're gonna say, well, what can you produce?
Yeah, this is what we got. Anything beyond this, you figure it out.
And we can't say, well, I think we can do this.
Right.
You know, they gotta know and we gotta know.
This is how much we can produce. And it's gonna, they're gonna have to pay for it too. They're gonna have to hire another person and we'll probably run 24/7. This is how much we can produce and this is what it's gonna cost. If that's not acceptable to the state, then maybe you should've thought about this before then.
If you're pushing 50-year-old plant, you're rating at a million gallons a day. Realistically, if you pushed it 24/7, you might get, you might get 850,000. And that's the most you're gonna get out of it.
This may be a dumb question, but I, honestly, I don't know. Where does the town of Burkeville get their water?
They have a well.
Everybody in the town has a well.
They got a well.
The town's got seven wells.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Gotcha, intrigued.
But, but it's got problems too.
They're going, the wells are going dry.
We're having to treat them now.
Rockwell over there?
The Department of Health, the Department of Health is pushing them all to tie over us, get out of that, get out of those wells. They don't want to get out of there, but...
So in terms of strategy, wait, do we wanna go to them with the number, this is what we can provide? Or do we want to see what their usage is and then tell them yes or no, we can do that?
Yeah, both. I think, I think we need both, both numbers.
We're gonna walk around the office tomorrow.
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry, I can't do it. We're gonna have to get the consultants to do it and...
Is there a rate, contractual, or is it based on what you charge any other customer?
There's this out-of-town rate.
It's an out-of-town rate?
Same thing we charge anybody out of town. No, well, prison, no, prison is a rate. Theirs is up to a certain amount, up to a million, say, whatever that number is, and then they charge a certain amount over there.
When you say prison, you mean not in a pressure over?
Correct, yeah. But that's another thing we need to look at, because if, if they're not paying what it cost us to produce, then we need to renegotiate that contract.
Well, last time we did that study, we weren't charging them enough already compared to other people in the area.
That's why we went up.
And we didn't go up that much.
And they, they absorbed it.
Yeah.
You know? So again, the money's not, that's not the thing.
No, we can do so many gallons.
We had the plans and that's the great, I just, I just don't think we do.
It's the biggest service we provide and if, if it's not paying for itself, then that's on us and we need to fix it.
But you can remember that one thing that was built in, was built, we paid someone, is actually on the grant money through the state too.
So I just want everybody to be aware of that and know it would need to, need to figure it out sooner than rather than later, because when they open that wing up and they start using water, then it's gonna be too late.
Okay, so we're good on action items? We can do the cost benefit analysis as to how much it affects Crewe?
So come council, I'm gonna fit in here and look into it.
All right, with that in mind, does we have a motion from council to have the engineers evaluate this? I see his head's nice.
I'll do it. I'll make a motion.
I really do hate spending town money because it's...
Send us there then.
Well, that's another thing too, not to belabor this thing, but they're gonna add on 278 beds to 500 beds and we need to charge them with availability fee because they're not paying tap fee. Because what they're doing is they're running all, there are any lines for Pimo over there at the VCBR, they're gonna run the VCBR here. They didn't pay a tap fee over here. So we need, I need a calculation too from the engineers on the availability fee.
All right.
And we need to go in for it.
Mr. Bowden has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion is to allow the town managers to contact the engineers to do assessment on our water needs for the state complex over there. It's my understanding from back there, it's my understanding that all three of those are now consolidated under one water. Not part of the two, there is two water?
Yeah, you got, you got...
The steam's running one, right?
Correctional and then you got Pimo, the VCBR tied together.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, my lights on. Motion carries.
That's all I need.
All right. Town attorney's report.
Yes, thank you. Just to piggyback off of what the town manager said, it's really going to depend on, you know, what the contract actually reads as to what our legal obligations are. So we'll get the ball rolling with that and see what the contract says, to see legally what the town needs to do.
That's the third piece I think we need to know going into negotiation. When we start talking about we may not be able to supply you, then we don't need some legal document saying, it's all right, we got to.
Right, exactly.
Your, your citizens will have to suffer. We gotta be sure that, that's not the case. I don't believe it. We need to know that.
Okay. Good question for the town attorney. Without a minute, we'll go to the mayor's report. Real quick, we've taken some hurricane preparedness actions in anticipation of Florence, I think is her name. And we have generators at the water plant and the sewage plant so that if, that we lose Dominion Power, we will have generators going so that people will have water and sewer services going in there. Now, they won't necessarily have hot water because they're, they've lost electricity, their water heaters are out. But they will have that. The Crew Police Chief coordinated with Crew Volunteer Fire Department and they advised him that they're prepared to use the firehouse for a shelter if needed Thursday, as early as Thursday, and definitely by Friday. And of course, we're hoping that it would only be limited to folks that, senior citizens in need, say for oxygen machines or, or life support systems, things of that nature. We'll provide more details as that comes out. The Crew Police Department and the Street Department, local personnel are on standby for senior citizen health and wellness checks, road clearing and water line repairs if they need to do that. We anticipate possible active god-level flooding at the present time. Now, that could change. In some cases, that's gonna make it impossible for some folks to get out of their house. If you, if some of our folks need medicines and if they don't plan properly and they don't have their medications on hand, we're gonna have our officers pick it up at Critman's and take it to their house and that's what they need to do in that type of situation. They will, we'll have somebody at town hall that can answer the phones. We think I had told the chief to put me on standby if he needs somebody to go out and help to wreck traffic or do, you know, whatever.
So Nottaway County is gonna have three facilities that are open for emergency and Crew's first, right?
I talked to Ronnie Rourke today. He said if there is a need for a shelter, the first one they would open is a Crew private skill. If there is a need.
If there's a need, right. In the county?
Yes. Well, yeah, technically, technically under the emergency plan, they run everything. We're doing this kind of, I wanna make sure that we've got ourselves covered, got our responsibilities covered. We've also put out a call for individual citizens with chainsaws, four-wheel-drive vehicles, regaters, a wish to help in clearing debris, to call Tony Shelton, the TJ Shelton, the volunteer, and then that, if they've got some service they can provide and Tony needs them, you know, he could tap into that extra labor and help clear streets and do that kind of thing, if, again, it's needed. And then of course, we will provide updates to WSVS and press as that comes about. There was a planning commission meeting on 14th of August. I went and I expressed the sense of the town of Crew, the two Crew Town Council regarding the zoning request for Lux Stone. The next meeting, I understand, has been moved to October for the public hearing by the Nottaway County Board of Supervisors. I think that is the 3rd Thursday.
It's the 18th.
The 18th? I'm not going to be here. Okay, well, it would be good. I've got to be out of town, unfortunately, I'm gonna be up Tennessee. Would the vice mayor be willing to read a statement based, I mean, we'll keep it simple and short to the expressing the town of Crew's...
Can we check the calendar?
Sure.
What date was that again?
That's the 18th of October.
3rd Thursday.
3rd Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, I think I did.
Okay, and I'll, I'll draft something up and coordinate it, and then, uh, and I would encourage all members of council to be there, and, uh, the town manager can do a, can do a poll, uh, phone call poll before the meeting, just to, to give you a heads up again. Uh, but I would be in Tennessee that weekend. I have, I've got, out there, it's long standing. Um, resolution, I have a resolution for National Light Out, basically a resolution, thanks to the Crew Police Department and sponsors of the August seventh, twenty eighteen National Light Out. Basically thanking our police officers, and our citizens, and the businesses in support of they hit over eighty-two local partner sponsors. Uh, I'll make a quick read. Whereas Crew Police Department planned, coordinated, and implemented on August seventh, twenty eighteen, the National Light Out, the whole of the town of Crew, that regardless of severely bad weather, resulted in several hundred courses of attendance. And whereas Chief, Police Chief Scott Dixon, Sergeant Ronnie Hyatt, Officer Caleb Lafferty, Officer Rondell White, and Administrator Assistant PJ Wilburn demonstrated an elevated level of leadership, teamwork, planning, and coordination over a sustained period in support of this community event. And whereas Crew Police Department was actively supported by the volunteer fire department for Crew, Berkle, and Blackstone, the Nottaway County Emergency Squad, the Crossroads CSP, prevention services, Southside Electric Cooperative, Cavalry Church, and whereas the Crew Police Department was actively supported by more than eighty-two local partner sponsors, consisting of the Crew, Berkle, Blackstone, and Greater Nottaway County businesses, and some out-of-area businesses, community partners, and local civic and veterans organizations, and local churches to support this event. And whereas the town council of the town of Crew recognizes the outstanding effort of the town of Crew Police Department team, and whereas the town, town council of the town of Crew also recognizes outstanding support over eighty local community and business partners, and now therefore be it resolved, council of the town of Crew, Virginia, the town council, by this resolution, applauds and commends the members of the Crew Police Department and their sponsors for the National Light Out. So, I just need a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second?
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Uh, I've been contacted by Jerry Fuller, the Crew Railroad Museum Association, they have requested the appointment of a new town representative to their board. The board meets once a month, usually on Thursday nights. Stevie had been our representative before, and, uh, I've got one gentleman that, uh, has some interest in it, but his scheduling, uh, does not make for, uh, Mr. Miskel, it's because he's out of town on his work, his doctorate, he can't always make the Thursday meetings. Is there anyone that is interested, uh, perhaps in, in attending these events?
Once a month?
Once a month, yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, I'll do it.
All right, so what we'll do, I'll appoint both Wendy and Phil to attend these. Phil's got some ideas and some, uh, things he wants to pursue that will, uh, be right in line with, with this. Okay, uh, Nottaway County Emergency Squad is engaged in fundraising, they've been sending out letters, and of course, next month, the volunteer fire department will be, uh, fundraising, and we encourage the public to, uh, support them as best they can. Columbus Day is the next town, town council meeting, uh, that is a federal holiday. Do you want to meet, or do you want to move to meet?
I'm working anyway.
Okay.
I'm done, I'm in.
All right.
I think so that our employees could be off, that we meet on Tuesday.
How about the fifteenth, would that be better, Monday, follow Monday? Okay, I have to teach on Tuesday, go ahead.
I have a conflict there, but y'all are welcome to go without me. I have a Florida meeting to lunch upon Monday, I heard Monday.
Okay, okay.
Tuesday?
I can't, I have to teach. Well, I can do Tuesday, the sixteenth, but I gotta teach, uh, on the night.
What's that, Wendy, and?
Okay, all right. All right, we'll move it to the fifteenth then?
That's fine.
Happy birthday.
October fifteenth?
Yeah.
It's my dad's birthday too.
October fifteenth.
October fifteenth.
It's a newspaper now.
Wait till then.
Okay, you also have in your, uh, your packet the standard operating procedure for the annual inspection of fire hydrants. This is a, uh, this is a SOP that has been adopted by the town of Blackstone, and what other town?
No, South Hill.
South Hill, yeah, South Hill. Uh, I'm putting this in committee, uh, a, a temporary or an ad hoc fire committee of Mr. Reed and Ms. Bowen, uh, in having them engage with the town manager, and the street department director, and the fire department, to, to, uh, basically make sure everything's lined up, so we can go forward with this. The fire department is meeting Wednesday night.
Seven, seven o'clock.
If y'all could be there, it would, it would be a good place to start. Uh, I think the main purpose of the meeting is to discuss the hurricane, and their response to it, but it's a good opportunity for you to get in there and network, and, and talk to them, and talk about offline or something, if you need to do that. Okay, good, uh, that's all I have. Do we have any committee reports? Mr. Reed?
Personnel haven't, I don't have a report, no.
Okay, findings were extensive.
Paid bills.
We paid bills, yes, I saw it. Uh, community development, uh, Ms. Bowen.
I'm still trying to figure out what it is.
Okay, well, all of them, uh-
Everything else.
Okay, we got it. I'll get on that.
Should've hit, I'm sorry, I should've brought that up.
Started out by the river and you see it.
Yeah, okay.
That'll work.
And I, I missed something. We have our, uh, bill from the, uh, from Jack Boswell, for the negotiations for the last two, uh, years.
Does it include bonus, or is that just the out?
There's no bonus. There's no bonus.
This is a two-year bill?
Uh, yeah, it's basically two years, yeah. Bottom line is forty-seven thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, he presented it to us, he says it does not have to be paid all at once.
Oh, that's nice.
What I would suggest is that-
What'd you buy your end?
What I would suggest is that, uh, we pay it, uh, over the next, well, over the next, what, four months, five months, till December, to, uh, get all this stuff in by December, and that way it gets it off our plate too, uh, by the end of the year.
Have we gone through it with five to come?
Yeah, we went through it. We, we all sat down, and we, we discussed it.
Did you charge us for discussing it?
Typical party bill. How you doing today? Oh, I'm fine, how are you, Jack? Oh, I'm fine.
Well, what you don't see is the stuff he didn't charge.
Right.
There's a lot he didn't charge, because he's a, he's a very dedicated, uh, civic, not an individual, has been, as long as I know him, and he's, what, seventy-two? Uh, I need a motion.
Mayor, I move that we pay the, um, bill to Jack Boswell, uh, or whatever payment plan the town manager wants to set up.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, do we have any further discussion?
We, we, we'll move, wait. Special projects account, we were talking about. Pretty much, can we take it out of the timber money that we get from, can you take it out of that?
Yes.
So, we, so we good to go, right?
Yeah, actually, the timber money more compensates for the, okay, all right. No further discussion? All right, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed by like sign, motion carries. I'm sorry, I should've had a little problem. Okay, moving to continuing business. Uh, you have in your package, or you actually, you don't have it in your package, but you had it before, the spite, uh, spot light abatement procedure that was presented by Councilman Miskelik at the June eleventh meeting. The proposal authorizes a spot light abatement procedure for the town of Crew to provide an additional legal tool that can be used to enforce code within section thirty-six dash forty-nine point one-one. This proposal was submitted for review to the town attorney prior to the June meeting, and was tabled until members of council could further review the procedure requirements. I'm comfortable, uh, as mayor, I'm comfortable, we can, we can modify, uh, we can modify what we need to make it work, I think, uh, and I think we should approve it, the spirit and intent, if the town attorney's comfortable, and, and move on from there.
I'm comfortable with it. Um, when I review the, um, procedure, do you think that we need to adopt an ordinance with it?
Okay.
So, we would need a public hearing, but we can offer us that if you have it noticed for next month.
Okay.
If that's what you all want to do.
Is there a ordinance requirement?
Yes, it is in, I didn't think that there was either, but, um, hold on, no, no, look it up. It seems to be in section D, um, uh, thirty-six, hold on, I don't know. Thirty-six.
That's okay, I trust you.
Okay, yeah, there does seem to be one. It, it is a little bit ambiguous in there about whether the code requires specific ordinances pursuant to each property, or is it a generalized ordinance? So, before we do a public hearing, I will be sure of that, but from everything I read, it looked like it was more of a generalized ordinance, so, so that we can put the lien on it like we do with other things when using a spot light.
Okay, uh, also, I need a checklist.
Yes.
If I'm want, because part of this requires that the mayor go out and do things.
Sure.
And I need a checklist of what we need to do legally before we can shut down a property, or seize it for demolition, or, or other purposes. And what we're gonna do is keep a file, and we'll take them one at a time, and, and literally go down that checklist, if we've gotta write three letters, and, and that's what we'll do, and, and step through that. But I need that, because I'm, I'm kinda slow on that checklist. Don't worry.
No, it's complicated, and, and we're still hung up on this building inspector thing. That, that situation has not gone away, and, um, example, we sent him over here to this property across the street here. I formally requested it through, through Ronnie Rourke, and he went over, but he told me he could not go in that building. So, he looked at the outside and gave me a report based on that. So, we're back to square one on this, who's authorized to do what? And he also followed up on D red, D red car in the, in him building, dangerous building. And I'm not picking on him, I'm just saying we got a problem. But he came to me the other day, supporting, uh, what was going on with that building. Are they gonna fix it? Uh, there's a broken window up there, he said that's dangerous, somebody needs to do something about it. Well, why don't you do something about it? You're the builder, but you know. And again, I'm not picking on him, but somebody's gotta have the authority to do this stuff and make it stick, and then, of course, how do you make it stick? It's the same thing we've been talking about, so, when you're researching that checklist, need to figure, even if we have to hire an outside, we talked about that before, uh, building inspector come in, how does it hold up at court? I don't know, you, you kind of-
Yeah, but I mean, we can hire the, I mean, we can hire that same guy, put him on our payroll at fifty bucks a dollar, that he can do it there.
Well, see, that's what I discussed-
Yes.
With, with him.
Yeah.
And he said what the county would do is bill the town fifty dollars for every building that they inspect, when we were talking about the rental properties. And then, they would inspect it, send the town bill, and then the town would in turn bill the homeowner for the inspection.
For all the county buildings, the homeowner instead of us.
Because it's located in the town.
It's also located in Nottaway County too.
Yeah, but it's a town.
But it's a service.
Yeah, but we pay more taxes to Nottaway County than we pay to the town too.
Yeah.
Well, again, it is the same issues that we've been talking about for a long time. Well, the bottom line, which you just said, like that window up there, and he says it needs to be fixed, if that guy can't fix it without building code, we gotta go fix it. And then we gotta bill them, if they can't pay for it, then we gotta put a lien on the problem. You know, that's what we're saying, we need to adjust that.
And the issue with, uh, entering the building, the problem is that, I don't, the issue becomes, um, when you can or cannot enter buildings, and essentially, it's treated the same under the law as a police officer entering a building because he is part of the local government. And so, what has to happen is you have to go to the magistrate and get and administer a search warrant to be able to have that search warrant, so that you can enter and then cite code violations that are on the inside.
That can be done on the building, right?
Yes.
So, there you go.
But you have to have the probable cause, so.
Well, you got probable cause.
It's about to frighten.
The front door is wide open.
The probable cause is-
Well, if the door is wide open, you don't have to have a search warrant to go in.
Correct.
I don't, I don't know.
I don't either, that's why we need the checklist, and, and-
That's my fault.
Something that we've got codified, that I can walk down, if I need to, if I'm riding around with a police officer, I need to be able to say, yeah, that building is this, therefore we need to initiate these taxes, and we go forth.
And one of those steps, and there has to be finale.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the biggest problem we face, is we, we talk about and approach things, and send letters, and you send letters, and I send letters, and the next thing you know, we're sitting here, what are we doing now? And nobody knows. It's gotta be, any end to it, so we can move on to the next.
Okay, any other continuing business?
Mayor, I do have a piece of continuing business. Counselor Col, I very briefly mentioned a project with, um, uh, what I've been working on with, uh, with, for, uh, for BML, um, or for state legislation, and gotten a BML to include it in their legislative genereps here. Um, basically, um, assessing the impact of state facility closures on rural localities. I would argue that legislation is needed to keep localities informed on the likelihood of closure of facilities, say, uh, VCBR, Piedmont Geriatric, Nottaway Correctional. Legislation is also needed to compel state, uh, local collaboration on contingency planning. Provide resources for mitigating the adverse economic impact of closure, and provide economic development such that our expertise, uh, so we can diversify our economy before facilities are slated for closure and, um, after they're, they're closed. As we know, uh, when a state agency find, uh, wants to put a new facility in a locality, the locations are, uh, chosen based on where there's gonna be the greatest economic impact and the least political pushback, which is why these facilities generally end in, uh, end up in rural areas. For example, VCBR was once scheduled for to open up in Petersburg, but, uh, there was a lot of pushback from Petersburg, and because it was, um, you know, uh, politically not feasible to put it in Petersburg, they put in Nottaway County, and Nottaway County welcomed it with open arms. That said, we do get the economic, uh, the positive economic impacts of the facilities. When facilities come in, they come, uh, among the top ten employers almost overnight. Uh, for example, for two-thirds of counties with a correctional center, the facility is among the top five employers. For eighty-three percent of counties with a correctional center, um, the facility is among the top ten employers. This means that- And, and several county, uh, counties, including Nottaway County, have multiple state facilities among the top five employers. In fact, in Nottaway County, five, or, five of the top six employers are, uh, state or federal facilities. This creates economic dependence on state, uh, the state government. The problem is none of these facilities are made to last forever, and we've seen that in recent efforts by Governor McCullough to try to close, uh, Piedmont Geriatric. Closures inevitable, um, due to factors like aging infrastructure, uh, decline in need, and other, um, market factors. So, facilities will one day close. When closures occur, um, it generally happens quickly, quietly, and with little or no collaboration with localities. It happens decades after the locality has already become dependent on the, uh, state for, uh, economic impact. Closures are generally within a short timeframe, um, within a few months to a year, uh, they're, they're closed. Uh, and it comes with no planning or economic assistance for the locality. Losses include losses in utility revenue, which we discussed in, uh, length earlier, uh, blight, because you have a building that's out there that's shuttered and- blight, because you have a building that's out there that's shuttered and isn't doing anything. No tax revenue from the vacant land because the Department of General Services still owns that property. You have the economic loss from businesses like Crew Station that don't, that no longer get the employees or the visitors who come in and buy their Subway or Pizza Hut. And of course, the loss of jobs at the facility. So what I'm proposing, and what I'd like to propose, what I'd like council to bless for then going and talking to Senator Ruffin Delegate Wright, is a solution that would keep localities informed on the likelihood of closure, compel state local collaboration, occupancy planning, provide resources for mitigating the adverse economic impact of closure, and provide economic development subject matter expertise to the locality. So how does this look? First step is to, for the state to develop a tool for evaluating the likely expectancy of a facility. Such a tool would take into account the infrastructure aging, economic trends, anticipated need, and other factors that the being pushers and number crunchers are much more knowledgeable about than I am. And the tool would be used to assess the likelihood of closure from a high probability, medium probability, and low probability on a five, ten, and fifteen-year periods. Once that tool establishes, or is established and is used, the state agency would report to the locality every five years on the likelihood of closure, high probability, high, medium, and low probability of closure. The high probability of closure, HPC rating, would be needed in the most recent report. So report to every five years to the localities. The, a high probability rating would be needed in the most recent five-year report to close a facility. And that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to close, but that it's, there's a high probability of closing. Then a three-years' notice from the date of the initial HPC rating or formal notification required before closure or significant downsizing. Meaning that step one is to create the tool. And step two is to issue a report every five years. Step three, once a, the first trigger point is an HPC rating that has to occur before any discussion of closure can start. And then, once that trigger point's met, a second trigger point at three-years' notice from that date is required for closure or significant downsizing, except in instances of imminent danger to health or safety. So if the building's falling down, that wouldn't necessarily apply. Second component, so in addition to, the first component was more of the knowledge. The second component is the collaboration. So the state would give, would require collaboration between, if the locality asks, with Virginia Economic Development Partnership, the Virginia Tourism Corporation, and Secretary of Commerce and Trade to help create an economic development strategic plan and possibly a five-year budgeting plan post-closure. So you have notice, you have collaboration, next part is funding. So this proposal would include a non-reverting fund for temporarily offsetting utility revenue loss, payment in lieu of taxes, marking the surplus property, and economic development subject matter expertise for the locality. So basically, resources that the locality doesn't have, minimal but important funding for those purposes. Summary, went over the background that localities don't have much to say when a facility comes, and they embrace it, but nevertheless, they become economically dependent on the facility. The problem is, no facility's meant to last forever. They're all going to close, not at the same time, but they'll all close eventually. The solution is several pronged. Biggest thing is more notice to localities, collaboration, and funding. And of course, there's a mutual benefit for both the locality and the state. The locality receives the collaboration. But with that, the locality and the people are less likely to push back when a facility closes because the state doesn't close facilities simply to close facilities, they close facilities for, to save money for taxpayers and things like that. So it's, collaboration just helps, creates that mutual benefit. And any questions on that?
Did you, is this what the legislation with BML is about?
So...
And you might want to explain that, you mentioned about...
So what, what I asked, so I'm on the BML Legislative Committee. And what I had asked, and what is likely going to be in the legislative agenda for the coming year, is not quite that virgige. Let me pull it up real quick.
Because you want this addressed through legislation.
Correct.
Right, okay.
So BML, it's maybe a little off, but what BML is, what the Legislative Committee has agreed to put in their legislative agenda, but to us go through the entire BML meeting at our annual meeting next month. BML supports the ability of localities to prepare for the closure of state facilities through the state providing ample notice to localities of proposed closures, state local collaboration for preparing for imminent closure, and the resources necessary for economic recovery.
Okay.
So it's broad enough to encompass everything I just presented, but not necessarily wedding into what I just presented.
Okay. What I would like to do then is request a motion from council that authorizes us to endorse that BML legislation, proposed legislation, to go along with this because this, you highlighted something that really jumped out at me, and it's that economic dependency that we have on these state facilities. And it's almost, it's almost good not to be, you know, a little bit too tied to it because you can't take the hit all the time.
I move that we support that.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I like sign. Motion carries.
I don't, I don't think you're honestly gonna get a five-year closure file, you know what I'm talking about. You might see a three-months-a-year when they mop all the...
But we'll never, never know unless we ask.
It might happen in twenty years, but you gotta get the ball rolling right.
Exactly, right.
And as far as the state, when they mop all that and get rid of the career ceiling, they offer free enterprise, as far as developed, they use a settlement, a settlement.
Okay, do we have any, that was continuing business?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any other continuing business? Do we have any new business? We have no new business, do we have any points of personal privilege, Mr. Miskelick?
Just that, what, as I mentioned, the BML conference is coming up in, I think it's the first weekend of October, so if anyone's interested in that, it's a great event.
Crew Garden Club will be celebrating its ninetieth birthday.
When?
Well, it really already went by in March, but we're celebrating if the hurricane didn't hit us September eighteenth.
September, where at?
Crew Community Center.
September eighteenth.
Two o'clock. What? Not in the rain.
With, well, we need a resolution, don't we?
I don't know. We were afraid to wait till we were a hundred. It is the oldest organized club in Crew.
It is the oldest organized club?
I don't mean the age of the members.
No, what I said.
When did you say it was then?
I'm not sure I'm not saying it wrong, I'm mixed up.
September eighteen.
September eighteen at the Community Center, two o'clock. The public is invited, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have food, free food, huh?
Yeah.
Outstanding.
I can give you a flower, Robbie, if you could.
Just hey, it's funny.
Yeah, we'll have the...
Ms. Bowen, anything?
No.
Mr. Reed?
Just put my name on the list, if we need chainsaw, or four-wheel drive, or whatever to help, I'll be here.
I can help.
Get me out of the house.
Traffic. I might hurt my hands a little bit. I'm trying to help.
You just stay open down there.
Do we have any public comment at this time? All right, with that in mind, we do need an executive session. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session consistent with Virginia State Code two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one, A subsection three, real property. So move. We have a motion from...
Soggy.
Mr. Knight is the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I like sign. All right, we're in the executive session here. Mr. Reed?
Second.
Ms. Stinson? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I like sign. I'll remember that, yeah. All right, with that in mind, we're now back in regular session. And I need to certify that we did not discuss anything in the executive session that was not covered under state law. Mr. Miskelick?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Ms. Stinson?
Yes.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
We're now certified. If I vote on it, all in favor?
Nope.
Okay, we're good. All right, with anybody?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we have a motion, we have a motion to certify.
Oh, all right.
I thought we just did.
We just...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I need a motion.
Well, I knew that we'd certify.
Soggy.
All right.
All in favor, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Was it Erin?
Yeah.
Who else?
Second one, Erin.
Erin made the motion to adjourn.
And Soggy.
Okay.
But everybody else didn't really give it, because I heard it.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. We be done.